Twenty-four, Mayor and Council seeks for the town of Shinkatig. My name is Samuel Cooper and I will be your moderator for this evening. It is truly a pleasure to be here with each and every one of you. We want this to be a robust and educational experience for everyone that's involved. And it's good to see so many people out this evening who have a concern about the town of Shinkatig and its elected officials. It is my pleasure at this time, as we begin this program, to review the rules for this evening's proceedings. Each candidate may make an opening statement, two minutes proceeding in random order. Each candidate shall have up to two minutes to respond to each question. Only town of Shinkatig registered voters may submit questions. Questions shall be submitted by the public in attendance at the forum and shall be vetted for compliance with these guidelines by the moderators and judges. Each attendee may submit up to two questions for the total event. Questions for each candidate will be asked in rotation, beginning at random, which has already been determined. Questions should be concise, to the point. Questions should address a current local issue, problem, concern, or policy. Questions must not contain obscenities or be of a personal nature or situation. Questions must not attack a candidate on the basis of their religion, sex, race, or other factor as dictated under the Civil Rights Act. Questions should not mention the name of specific individuals other than the candidate. The forum was advertised on the Chinkatig's, um, excuse me, on the Chamber's website and in the Eastern Shore Post. Nameplates for each of the candidates may not be provided, but I think everybody knows who they are and will allow them to identify themselves. The moderator will welcome attendees and candidates and explain the rules to the audience in attendance. Each candidate may make a closing statement in two minutes. The event will be limited to one and a half hours after all candidates have been asked an equal number of questions. So with that, we will begin our forum for the evening. Everyone of them is so happy, angry. So, we will begin with opening statements and the first statement will come from current mayor.
Well, I just wanna, before we get into it, I wanna follow form and ask for prayer and the pledge of allegiance. So if we could all please stand. Brother Jay?
First of all, I would just thank you for the opportunity to give this important occasion, Lord, as we listen to the candidates for the upcoming election in Shinkatig. I would just thank you for each level, Lord, which has asked that you continue to rest in health and strength, Lord, that you're dealing with the good times and bad times and giving them that perseverance that every candidate needs to sustain themselves in this type of situation. Just to add your guidance upon them and your precious name of Ukraine.
Amen.
Our fellow citizens, to the fight of the United States of America, and to a republic which sustains, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
It is my pleasure to have, to assist me this evening, is Evelyn Shakel and is Joy Moore, who will be our timekeepers and they have vetted the questions. Thank you, Mr. Mayor, for bringing that quick statement to my attention. At this time, we will ask for Mayor Leonard to give his opening statement.
Well, good evening. It's a pleasure to see everybody here. It's a bigger crowd than we anticipated, which is awesome. And often, if you listen to our town council meetings, we often say how good it is that we live on Shinkatig Island. Most of you have known me since probably, uh, I was running around the high school being babysat by my two sisters. I was quite the nuisance, from what I've been told. But, uh, it has truly been a pleasure of mine to serve you guys for the last eight years. And hopefully, I'll have the pleasure of serving you for more. Thank you.
Good evening. Really, really happy to see so many people here tonight. Town government only works when the people get involved with it. And it only works when the people participate. Really nice to have Sammy back there with us, doing this with us, and Evelyn and Joanne. My name is Denise Bowden. I am a candidate for mayor. I have served on the council for the last eight years. I am a thirty-two-year member of the Shinkatig Volunteer Fire Company. I am a current board member of the Museum of Shinkatig Island. Some people ask me, "How much do you love Shinkatig?" I can't put that in a sentence or a paragraph or even probably a book, but I did put it on the back of my arm because Shinkatig Island is tattooed on the back of my arm, much to my mother's dismay. Being here, being able to participate in this is truly a pleasure, like all we said. Being able to serve you all for the last eight years has been an absolute pleasure. In my opinion, there is nothing, nothing like Shinkatig Island. Waking up to the smell of that marshland, waking up to the smell of that saltwater, nothing like it. You're not gonna find it anywhere else, except for here. You might think you found it somewhere else, but I guarantee you, it'll be back here. I would love to earn your vote to be the next mayor of Shinkatig Island, and I thank you.
For council, Nick Howard.
How's it going? And thank you for coming here tonight. My name is Nick Howard. I am a lifelong resident, born and raised here. I'm looking about myself. I'm a Verizon employee, worked for Verizon for a little over twenty-six years now. Raised both my children here, still have one in high school. The youth is important to me. When people ask me, "Why did you run for council? Why are you running for council?", I like to say, "I want to continue that we grow our local economy." That's very, very important to all of us, "But I want to preserve our small-town children." That's really important. Also, I want us to work together to find a way to bring the youth and young families back to Shinkatig. That's what we need here to continue building our community, continue growing, and continue our heritage. Thank you all. You're welcome.
Next?
I am being aggressive.
Next, we have Sonia Watson, council.
Good evening, everyone. I have to say, this is the biggest job interview I've ever been on in my whole life. Someone had mentioned that this might be a little intimidating, I'm just telling you. That's us. Don't even touch it. But thanks for, uh, having me here. I just wanna thank the chamber for putting us together tonight, and thank Mr. Cooper for linking us. I'd like to also thank all that signed and supported me to run for this election. A little bit about myself, for those that do not know me, I was born and raised in Shinkatig, of five generations of Watsons have lived on this island. Our planet is spent fifty years on the East Side Road, also known as Dodge City. I was inspired to run in memory of my father, Robert Watson Senior, a talented de-fouille farmer, awesome grandfather, respectful of our council, with a huge love for this island. We always joked with my dad, he passionately came to the council meetings, and when I say passionate, I, we always joked about when he would enter the council meeting, that everybody was probably going, "Oh, God, Mr. Watson's here." He was very passionate. A little bit about myself, I'm dual career, with fifteen years in auto welding, and I'm a credential safety manager with seventeen years in this professional field. Regulations and positive cultural building, they're my passion. Protecting people, negotiating, and leading those on opposing sides to work together and do the right things are some of my strong skills. I have intervened and built relationships with state and federal officials in every aspect of my job. Thank you. I love what I do.
Would you all like a ten-second warning?
That would be great. Let me just give you my last line. As in, I'm probably one of the many that can actually say, "I love what I do." Thank you for having me here tonight.
Next, we'll have Bill McCune.
Good evening. For those of you... Good evening. For those of you who may not know me, my name is William McCune. I'm seeking reelection for my second term on town council. I've been serving since 2020, elected in the midst of the pandemic. I'm a lifelong resident of Shinkatig, graduated from Shinkatig High School, began my college career and as a graduate from Eastern Shore Community College. I hold degrees in business management and business administration. As far as my career, I'm a vice president for Cisco Foods for the Eastern Shores region. Been with Cisco for about twenty-five and a half years, been a member of the executive leadership team for about ten years. As far as my experience on the town council, served on many committees, budget personnel committee, ordinance committee, the authority that previously was responsible for the center, served on that as well, as well as the planning commission. As far as other memberships, I'm a member of the New Baptist Church, a member of Masonic Lodge on here, on Shinkatig, as well as the chapter of Royal Arch. As far as my desire for Shinkatig, I first ran for office for many of the reasons that you've heard already. Lifelong resident of Shinkatig, loved this island, grew up here with my two other siblings. My mom and dad raised us about a mile from here in Chester Park, so very fond of Shinkatig. Very much pro-business. I think there's, I think it's always important that the community and the business partners in the community work together to foster a better Shinkatig. So, thank you for your time today.
Next, we'll have Mr. Gene Leintier.
I wrote something down, but of course, I'm not gonna use it. I do thank God and thank you, Arthur, for a town that seeks God's favor. We have to have him. And the things I wrote down here, I wrote in "I, I, I", there is no "I" in this town. Our employees keep it running sharply. Are we correct? I promise you, we are not. But we are a town that not just the peasant people kept it going, the people in the past have it going, and other people, most of us have worked for the town. And we are blessed, I promise you this. Like you say, we, in the past, from 2021 to 2024, are wasting, increased one and a half million dollars, but we still have 1.7 million dollar budget surplus. We're a town that tries to be physically responsible. We're a town that wants to do and make sure our employees have enough money to make a living. And I know we didn't get that, but what I'm gonna say, maybe more, and I promise you, I know that, but we try to be competitive with accounting, and as Councilman Otto has done, and we even try to keep your personal property taxes down. You look at the last twelve years, you'll see, you'll see that. It's gone up very, very, very. And like I said, we want to keep, like I said, if yes, where our young people can afford to have a place here, we want it so they can afford to stay here. And I just thank you, and like everybody said, I do want to ask you for another four years, and thank you very much.
Thank you all. At this time, we will begin a question and answer session, and we will begin with the mayor's question. Are these, are there plans to attract healthcare services to the island? And Mayor Leonard, this is directed to you initially.
There have been efforts made. The Gwans Club has worked with that, trying to get physicians here. The healthcare system, and it's not just here, in the country, is a mess right now. My wife has worked in the healthcare system for twenty-eight years, if I'm not mistaken. And it's a mess all over the country, but being that we're so isolated, you know, we do need a doctor on the island. Luckily, we've got a doctor on the island, and fortunately for us, he'll answer the phone when we call him. But he's not for everybody. The problem with attracting doctors is much more far-reaching than what we can do. I actually had a friend that was a doctor, small practice, and he chose to go to a small community up in Maine because of what they offered him. And he was explaining to me the issues that they have with it. So I can certainly see the need for a island doctor. Believe me, I went and saw Dr. Amron plenty for emergency problems and mundane things. And if any of y'all can remember Dr. Amron, he had the bedside manner. He was not an angel, put it that way, but he was, he was great to have on the island when we needed him. So I can see that we need a doctor, just the problems of getting one is gonna be a hassle.
Well, just like all we said, what's going on in the country today? Doctors can't doctor anymore. You know, the insurance companies have the medical field right by the throat, for the most part. And if you're lucky enough to even get into a doctor anywhere, you might get about three minutes with him, he's on his computer, and then you see the nurse practitioner or something like that. One of the problems you have attracting doctors here on the shore, on Shinkatig, is because basically, it's such a rural area, that young doctors coming out of the city or coming out of a big college town, they're looking for something else. They're looking for somewhere, you know, that there's a lot of activities and things like that. And we don't necessarily have everything that the younger sets of doctors are looking for. They want a buzzing community, not necessarily just to go out on the beach all the time and things like that. It is very hard to attract the medical field here. Just one recently, that the only dentist practice now on Shinkatig is closing up and leaving. I don't know why. I can assume that it's probably due to the insurance things. Until this whole country can get a handle on the insurance industry when it comes to letting doctors be doctors and do their thing, I think we're always gonna be in this situation. We have to be very proactive in what we're offering people coming out of college, out of medical school, and what we can do to help them want to come here and bring their young families if they have one. The shore is not for everybody. It's for all of us. We're here, but it's not for everybody. So we need to be a little more proactive on how we could bring somebody here. Whether, and a lot of them do come because, you know, they're starting out their practice, and this is like a stepping stone. The days of Dr. Amron are gone, and that's sad. But I would love to get input from the community on how to bring someone here to help us with their medical situation.
Thank you, Governor. For council, what is the town going to do about the change to the beach? Its effect upon property value, economy, tourism, tax, income, et cetera? And we're gonna ask Nick to field this question initially.
Uh, with the beach, it was in 2012 that local representatives went to Washington and spoke in a subcommittee hearing. And after that, with the results, the Fish and Wildlife decided to work with us. They came up with a comprehensive plan in 2016, and that plan was to move the beach parking to, I'm sure some of you have seen now, a little farther north. The chamber did a study not long ago that showed over seventy percent of our visitors went polled and asked, "What draws you to Shinkatig? Why did you come there?", and number one reason was the beach. So because of that, what I believe is important is sustainability. Each high tide, storm, over and over again, we continue to shut down the parking lots. With the parking lots moved north, it's a compromise. It's not an ideal situation, but it keeps the beach going and keeps the economy going, so that then it gives us time to address the South End. So I believe that our focus now needs to turn towards the new parking lot that they're starting to build to make sure that we get the number of parking places that were promised and that things are tweaked and done the way that we can do it.
I've spoken to quite a few residents that had worked for the refuge, and they had mentioned, "It's too late." And I just don't believe it's too late. I think that we need to reach out and reach up and look for other sources and to our representatives to have them step in. I just don't think it's too late. I think that there might be some more resources that we need to research to keep that end of the island, of Asitig Island, from continuing to erode. It's gonna affect our town long-term, and I think that moving the parking lots for that entire situation, I don't think we're done with that.
So as Nick said, representatives went in 2012 and appeared before a subcommittee. And back then, the actual plan for beach access was, as a lot of people probably remember, a shuttle service, somewhere around Maddox Campground, which would have been devastating to the economy of this island. Luckily, whoever vets prevailed, the town got involved, the county of Akramak, and a new master plan was developed in which what is about to start, or which is about to help for bids for the project that Nick also mentioned, for relocation of the parking lot further north. As of right now, that's estimated to be somewhere around twenty-four and a half million dollars, about seventeen and a half million dollars of that has been funded through a Department of Transportation grant, so they're looking for other sources of funding for the remaining balance. So I think as far as a council and a community, the thing we have to do now is support that plan and make sure that that plan is executed, that we receive the nine-hundred-and-sixty-one parking spaces that we have now, that we have similar square footage of parking area for that stretch of beach, that we have the seven means of traveling from the parking lots to the actual beach area, and that that is accessible to everybody. I think that's the thing that we have to do now. I think down the road, as Nick mentioned, we can look at the possibility of alternatives to protecting the Southern End, or at least coming up with ideas, whether it's by the Army Corps of Engineers or whichever organization it may be for things like seawalls, brick walls, things of that nature, to protect our Southern End.
Yeah, I'd like to thank everybody else. I hate it going north. It's not the same experience. However, I think that maybe a conspiracy there is, but we had a road trip over NASA the other day. I think the way NASA's gonna speed up the launches and the amount of launches, I really think that's why the going north is being sped up too. I mean, this is a long process, and now all of a sudden, it's fast-paced and in your face, but I really think NASA's plan is about a lot to do, nobody's saying that, but that's, that's just my own feeling. But I know that NASA is definitely gonna speed up the launches, and they know that Shinkatig's gonna be plus about having to close the beach every time they shoot a rocket, and we will. But I think that's, I think that's a lot of it. It's not being said, but I do think it's a lot of it, you know? And yeah, I hate it, because like I said, that sunset weather is often beautiful, and sunlight is often beautiful, but I really think that they're set. I think they're dead set and stung that's what they're gonna do.
We'd also like to give our candidates for mayor, in order to address this question too. We will begin with Mayor Leonard.
Actually, did we, no, did we, did we not? The first question.
That's the first one, too.
I need more than two minutes. Anybody who knows me at all and outs knows me, I am dead set against moving those parking lots. I'm already hearing chatter from people, and I see a lot of people and talk to a lot of people every day. I'm already hearing chatter about, "I don't know if I'm gonna come anymore." "I don't know if I wanna go through all that." "I don't wanna walk through the woods and the mosquitoes and the ticks and everything else on a boardwalk to get out to the beach." I went over there to the refuge about two weeks ago, and there was two questions I asked. And one of them is, "Where is the closest parking spot that somebody's actually gonna put their toes in the sand?" And the answer was, "A hundred yards." So you pack up all your kids and your sunscreen and your tents and everything else you're gonna take and drag Johnny and Susie along a hundred yards screaming and kicking, and let me tell you how you're gonna like that beach experience. You're not. The next question I asked was, "What are you gonna do to protect this Southern End, where we are right now?" Shinkatig inlet right now, and the South End of Shinkatig is already so vulnerable because of the widening of the inlet, that any good washover or any major storm, and we've been very blessed not having anything really major, any major storm that could cut another inlet through there, South End of Shinkatig's had it. We have to be more proactive in this. This project, as Billy stated, is somewhere around twenty-five and a half million, twenty-six million. You know what? A couple million dollars in jetties would have solved this problem a long time ago. But we never got to the right people to hear that in their ears. Our beach is our number-one asset. And we have to protect it. We have to protect it. I implore you all, listen, be active, and be proactive in this when you're approaching your elected officials higher than us.
Okay, so, I was on council before I became mayor, and we were working with the beach at the time. They had just been to Congress and watched that. How do I put that politically? Circus? So, I was very fortunate. The past mayor, my uncle Tar sitting here, asked me to go over and attend some of the meetings at the Wildland Refuge. And they didn't take it lightly. It was not something that they just did, you know, for the heck of. They had multiple scientists, multiple organizations looking at this problem. And they came to the conclusion that it was best to be prepared because the South End of the island is gonna continue to change regardless of what you do. They've tried jetties over on NASA. They didn't work. They had to pull them up. So, according to the scientists, well, these are the people that study the geology of the island, they told us where this new parking lot is gonna be placed is more sustaining. Now, they also told us that where the old parking lot is will not wash through. The sediment in the cove is different than the sediment in the ocean, and when a breach happens, it'll close up and there won't be an inlet formed there. So we, we don't have to worry about it washing through and affecting Shinkatig. What we have to worry about is having a plan in place, because you all know it just as well as I do. If we get a storm like they did down in Florida and our beach is gone, we have to have something in place where we can move. If not, we're gonna be affected. If not, we're going to be affected.
Thank you all. For council. We've seen lots of development on the island. Tell us whether you think we have maxed out, excuse me, uh, should expect more or rethink what is in the best interest of the island? And the question is to Mr. McCollum.
I feel we need to really take a big look at from here on the island. Um, I'm not for putting a stick house out in the middle of the marsh, you know, septic tanks, you know, confident from one place to the other. I'm, I'm not for that. I think that any growth, um, needs to make sense and we need to preserve part of our small talent and equities. I don't want this to turn into a Cape Charles or an Ocean City, but I think that we are such a big deal that we do also have an obligation to cater to the visitors to the island. So it just has to make sense. There has to be a balance.
So as far as, as development and, um, what that entails, I think one of the things and I think we do, um, it's important that we have a really strong, um, BZA, a planning commission. And I think one of the things that's going to really help us as far as proper planning for the island is the town planner's position that we approved in this year's budget and that, um, Town Manager Toddler is currently, um, seeking, um, applicants for and give right productive energy for. I think the combination of those three arms of the government will be key as far as future planning. As far as being tapped out or, um, you know, room for additional growth and additional building, you know, Nick had mentioned it earlier about, um, making sure that we're attracting year-long residents here, um, to raise their families here for the kids to go to school here for to be involved in the community and that's very important. And, um, some of the things that we're looking at currently, um, through budget personnel is making it more attractive here on the island for year-round residents, you know, trying to make it attractive so that when folks are person homes here, it's not for short-term rentals only, it's also for long-term, um, year-round residents. And I think that's something that we need to continue to pursue, um, whether it's through some type of tax incentive or whatever vehicle that we can, um, legally put in place. And a lot of this is going to, um, come at the, um, behest of our representatives, um, with the state of Virginia, um, because a lot of these changes that we would need to make to put in place has to be done at a general assembly level. Um, so it's really important, just like working with our partners and asking about the beach, that we also partner with or hire officials, um, within the state government.
My own son comes to me, says, uh, Dad, why'd you allow the, the colleges that are coming on the island? And, uh, I said, uh, Gene, I said, uh, you like the old boat slunk out there better? Yep. I said, did you like the old rundown restaurant better? Yep. How about, how about gross steak? Like, yep, that I did. But in the real world, like you said, they were not making us any money for trans occupancy tax. We do have to be responsible and we took a sale around the island, uh, bang it, it is, like you said, the inlet is the same way. Whether it's all worked, it's all laid, I mean, like I go, I there one, two o'clock in the morning, you could have one, two o'clock in the morning and you run until you couldn't really run anymore. But like you said, the things that were fixed up there, all the, where he's standing around there, that protects our island. And, and like you said, that land was actually going back to wetland and he loved his heart and just fully on top of it. But the fixing up, thanks to you do it responsibly, it, it not only will look better, but it also will bring in income to the island that we can pay our employees, uh, with the trans occupancy tax that, that, uh, brings in.
Yeah, I don't, uh, I don't want the island to turn into Ocean City even. Uh, I don't want us to build up and I really don't want to struggle, you and water anymore. Uh, that's a big thing for me. I, I look at growth different and the, the growth I want to see is in the form of revitalization. Uh, I think we have an opportunity now with the time septic coming through to work to revitalize our downtown. And I think by revitalizing our downtown, it'll spur new growth. Uh, the town can work to offer incentives for local businesses. And every small town you go to that's special has a downtown area that is thriving. And so I have, I do not object as far as residential housing, uh, so that we can offer opportunities for more full-time residents here. But, you know, I, I really think that the way is to revitalize and, uh, take the opportunity and kind of clean some things up around here.
Our next question. Can anything be done on the South End of Ascotig to protect our Southern End? This will go to Mayor.
Well, if you haven't been over to the Southern End, the Southern End of the island is not a problem. The Tom's Cove Hook area is actually growing by leaps and bounds. Um, and we had a coastal geomorphologist, that's a nice one, um, come in and give us talks. He's with the William Mary and he's studied the entire ocean shore and he says that Ascotig Island is unique. Uh, most of the barrier islands are receding to the westward. Ascotig is going to continue to grow southward. It will eventually form a barrier island to Wallops. So, um, our South End is, is going to continue to grow. And if you think about it, Ascotig Island has changed multiple times. There've been different inlets, uh, in the island. Uh, it's continued to grow, it's continued to expand southward. So I don't think our Southern End is a problem. Now, what we do have to study, and we've been working in this for years, is trying to get our inlet studied. And yes, that's affected by the Southern End of Ascotig, but I think it's a completely different animal than the end of Ascotig is our inlet. Um, so I think we, we're fine with our Southern End of Ascotig.
Well, like Arthur says, we've been trying to get an inlet study done. Uh, let's see, I've been on council now eight years. Eight years ago, him and myself and, uh, current, the, uh, former town manager and a former council member, Ben Ellis, we traveled to Richmond. And we were chasing down congressmen as they were running out of the bathroom just trying to get them to listen to us. And that was nothing but a fiasco. Here we are eight years later, we still don't have an inlet study. Back then, it was going to be a three million, three-year study. There's no way in the world now that it's going to be three million dollars. It's probably going to be in the seven million dollar range. You know, the Army Corps of Engineers sends a lot of money up to Jersey. They send a lot of money everywhere else it seems like, except for here. One of the problems that we had down on that end, and, and if you're out in the boat like I am a lot and Arthur's out in the boat a lot, um, when you pull out of the harbor there, you can see so much that has changed, so much that is washing away. That tide rolls through there like Alabama, right? That tide rolls through and let me tell you, it, it, you can see out there to the marker where it used to be like ten foot from the shoreline and it's now probably fifty feet from the shoreline. So we have a whole lot that's happening on that South End. I do believe with all my heart, everything I researched, looked at, jetties would help. We need to narrow that inlet up somehow. It is washing away all around the area to Memorial Park, the way that tide comes through there, all around the front end of the island. Things are changing and it changes every year out there. So we really need to bear down on these people to get this inlet study done. Um, you know, I, my own self, I'd like to take a big dump truck myself and just go put the rocks out there and say, all right, find me later. But we all know it can't work that way. But we're, we're teetering on some disaster down there in the inlet area that needs to be taken care of.
Right, we'd like for the candidates for council to address this question also. We will begin with you, Mr. McCollum.
So as both Arthur and Denise said, um, it's important that when we're trying to address the situation that we number one have all the facts, that we're listening to the folks, whether it's the geologists or the oceanography people or, um, whichever specialists that, um, will chime in on the situation on the Southern End, um, to give us the best set of facts that we can possibly have to make a right decision, um, from a local level and then take that to our state and federal, um, counterparts. It's easy to, it's easy to say what we think the problem is and what we think is the best possible way to address it. But as Arthur mentioned, I think it was, um, over NASA, they put jetties in, they took jetties out, um, they actually detracted from their, um, from their beach area and actually made a, a situation worse. So I think the most important thing that we can do is while we have to act with urgency, we also act with caution, do our due diligence and make sure that we identify the problem correctly and then figure out how the best to attack it.
Even if the beach does go normal, like I said, the Southern End protects our island. And how you maintain a beach, this isn't coming from me, it's coming from them staffs I could say. Maintain a beach wide, dune, grass and fenced. And that's, that's not me, that's, and I don't want to knock the park service, but they maintain a lot of that Southern End wide and flat, little burrs. Now, I'm having problems with little burrs, but that protects our island. So it's just flat out facts. It's like you said, it's incoming on my yet. Wide, dune, grass and fenced. And then like you say, even if we go normal, we have to maintain that beach in the way that it protects our island.
So I think we need to shift our focus. We're surrounded by government, uh, federal government, state government, red tape, waiting eight years, waiting ten years. I think we should shift our focus to what we can control and that is what can we do on the island itself. We need to find out through proper experts and authorities, what can we do here? Do we need to raise roads? How do we provide us out into the island? Do things that doesn't require waiting years and years, but take matters into our own
Yeah, well, it's hard to be the last person to answer a question like that because it's like, point taken, point taken. Everybody had so much and, and were spot on with the focus. I agree with Billy. We need to make sure that we're getting the facts from the right place and that all of it is considered, every single, um, detail that everybody pretty much put on the table. I, I echo and agree.
This question is for all candidates. What can be done about two-wheeled electric bikes, scooters and sidewalk speeding, no lights, following no rules? I ask Ms. Biden to initially address this question.
I was taking notes. Well, two-wheeled electric bikes like a regular bicycle, I don't, I don't have too much problem though. You know, they seem to be doing their thing, but those little buzzing scooters with those teenagers on it, I got a problem with those. And it's not because the teenagers are out there having fun, but the teenagers need to be taught the rules of the road. And, you know, downtown this year at Robert Reed Park, I saw some kids buzzing through it and nearly took a woman out with her, with her kid that she had with her. And, uh, our cops cannot be everywhere. We, they cannot be everywhere. That's just the way it is, whether people are speeding, whether these kids are buzzing around on these scooters, whether people are not following the rules of the road, whether they got an untagged golf cart, it doesn't matter. They can't be everywhere. It is up to the parents to teach these kids what the rules of the road are and how they should be acting on these little scooters. That doesn't always happen. My mom and dad tried to teach me a lot. I go out and do just the opposite. But we got to get a handle on that part because the laws are specific. They have to be fourteen years old, I believe, or fifteen to ride one of those things. Um, that's not always the case. And I don't want to take anything away from these kids out there having fun. At least they're not out destroying everything and, and tearing things up. But we do got to get a better handle on how they're interacting with traffic and people. How do we go about that? I don't know. The cop, cops do a bike rodeo, um, and they try to get the kids to participate in that. I don't know if we need more education in the schools with it, um, even a flyer to hand out to the kids to take home with them. But it is a problem. It's a nuisance and it wouldn't be if they only respected the people that they're interacting
So when these little scooters, uh, first came out, we did try to interact, to enact ordinance to limit them, um, but we were mandated by the state and so that kind of did away with our ordinance. And it's, it's one of those things, when, when they first started buying them, you know, parents just saw that as a way to get their kids, you know, somewhere easily. Kids saw it as, you know, they didn't have to exercise anymore and they could just jump on their scooter and take off. And I mean, I, I, I had calls from parents saying, "Why are you not allowing little Johnny to ride his scooter that we got him for Christmas?" And you're like, "Well, these are the rules. You have to follow the rules." And, and they're like, "Yeah, but we just bought it for, for Christmas." Okay, darn. But it, it all comes down to common sense. And unfortunately, kids are going to be kids. You know, sometimes they don't, don't have a lot of common sense. They, they're going to go out and have fun and, um, we do have to have some kind of, I think we can probably do it through our schools. And the town is lucky that we have two of our town lease as SROs in these schools. And that was something that the town did, um, when we were having problems with our school system. We weren't supplied SROs by the county, so we took it upon ourselves and put our town cops in the schools. So I think if, if we need to, we can get it through our SROs to, you know, if they see somebody on a scooter, they can school them a little bit, hopefully.
I'm actually going to take a different approach. We are adults and we, we know the kids aren't going to do that. So we have to have our extra eyes out. I know I have, uh, kids come to church and it's how they come and always, the first question I always ask them, uh, you talk to them, uh, how many of y'all have close calls? And, you know, and I know I used to ride bicycles over there going close calls well when I was younger, I don't remember that. And, uh, I actually had way more close calls on Shingate Teakland, I promise you that. I get on the calls way and I promise you that. I believe that, but that's, that's a fact. But these, these kids, all of them, they have close calls, but it's not skill enough not to keep on doing it. So we're going to have to have our, put our extra eyes out and our extra patience because like you say, kids, we all know the kids. And I'm going to try to say that about kids too. We're going to have to double my attention.
Yeah, if you think we got problems now, you should have seen Gene Wang ride close calls well. Here's what I challenge you all to do. Here's what I challenge you all to do. I work with the kids every day. I was telling the group the other day that, you know, they had to find your phone app now where you always know where your kid is all the time. Well, when I was growing up here, the Find Your Kid app and Find Your Phone app, well, everybody knew who you were and if you acted up, by the time you got home, they were on you, you know? So what I encourage you to do, and it means a lot, if you see a kid doing this, you don't know the kid, but take a minute and talk to the kid. If you don't know anything about him, he could be a kid, just needs to be mentored, doesn't have a great mom and dad at home, just not sure. Take a minute, talk to them. Just explain to them, look, I think a lot of you, I think a lot of the kids on the island, slow down a little bit. Let's look before we go somewhere. I think that's what's important here. I think that we need to get back to our community. And our community looked out for kids and everybody else. And just because you haven't lived here all you like, doesn't mean you're not part of our community. We invite you to help us out because we could always use an extra hand.
These little young ones on these scooters just make my safety senses just crawl. And I've met, see, I've seen you, my, you know. And I agree, education is key. You know, I train in safety. So there are sometimes these kids aren't thinking about how dangerous it is. Helmets and safety gear, you know, maybe have a little safety force at school, make them aware of what could happen, give them some videos on safety. I think that this might be, I believe that question also said something about sidewalks and bike paths. That would be a great project for the planner because maybe we had some better areas for bikes and scooters. We could at least keep them in an area where they'd be a little safer and out of heavy traffic areas and things like that. So it's kind of a two-part thing. Maybe we can help give them a better area to ride scooters and bikes and then also, you know, educate them on doing it safely.
So this past summer, a little bit of a funny story, I pulled up to the intersection there by Sensations on Depot, getting ready to cross across Maddox. And I see this little girl just trucking on a scooter. And I'm looking and I'm in my golf cart and I look and it's my pre-teen, early teen niece coming from a stressful day of salsa or ice cream serving. So I certainly understand, you know, a lot of these kids work, they got to go back and forth work. It's different than when we were growing up. A lot of them were fortunate enough that a lot of our moms were home with us. So they got us to and from where we needed to go. And that's certainly changed because it certainly takes two or more incomes now to make ends meet in these current economic times. But like everybody else is set up here, it's a combination of things. I think it's common sense, it's parents being involved. It's also, like Arthur suggested with SROs, making good use of them to talk with these kids about safety and, as Sonja said, about helmet, wearing helmets and things of that nature to keep them safe. I also think there's possibly things that we could do for better trails for these kids to go to and from. So it's a lot about common sense and it's a lot about community involvement. Like Nick said, back in the day, you didn't need to find ju apps and light 360 and all that type of thing, which thank God they didn't have because my mom would have had a big screen TV watching that like a lot. Because I was never where I was supposed to be. And, but it's about having community involved and making sure that these kids feel safe and that when an officer comes up to them and maybe talks to them about safety on these scooters and things, that the parents don't take it as, you know, an egregious act by the local law enforcement, that the law enforcement is also trying to keep these kids safe and make sure that they get home the same way that they're loved.
Our next question is for all candidates. How do you propose keeping community on our island with all the short-term rentals? You've lost two dental practices, a doctor full-time, and people cannot move families here because housing prices are so high. Can a city planner help?
Was there more to the question? You said the city. City.
City planner help?
Yes. A short answer.
Certainly. Well, the planner could definitely help us. And it's, it's one of those kind of, it's a good problem to have. I do a lot of traveling up and down the shore and Shinkatik is that light on the hill that the rest of the shore wishes they were like. Yes, we have our problems with short-term rentals and the affordability of housing on the island. I'm very fortunate that two of my children moved away and have moved back to the island. Luckily, they were able to find housing so they could move back on the island. It is a problem and it's one of those problems that I believe a planner could help with. You have to get the right planner. You can't just get anyone that says they're a planner. You have to get the right one. And those solutions are not going to be something that is quickly come upon. It's something that we're going to have to work on with the planner as soon as we can get one hired. We've been after Mike for a year and a half, two years to get one. And unfortunately, I don't want to say any bad things, but the last city planner we had, he was in over his head. So it's all about getting the right person and the right fit and hopefully we can find one.
So in the 2020 census, we had an year-round population of 3,344 people and a total of 4,251 housing units. And out of those housing units, approximately 700, 800 are short-term rentals. The thing about short-term rentals is it's a double-edged sword. We have a budget of around $9 million. Real estate taxes don't even bring in three-quarters of a billion dollars. So this town relies heavily on mules tax and TOG tax, which is part of the short-term rentals. We do have to find a balance. About two years ago, I looked at some numbers from the past 60 years about our school population here. And from the early 60s on up until two years ago, that population kept declining. Young people cannot afford to live here. If I wasn't in the situation that I was in, that I was able to inherit part of a family home, I wouldn't be able to afford to live here. That's just the bottom line. But we have to do better because we have to bring young people back here. We also have to have the tourism industry here, but we have to find that balance. And can a planner help? Absolutely a planner can help. And like Arthur says, we definitely got to find the right one. It's not an easy job. We have to strike that balance that keeps our small-town charm, which I believe the charm is with the people and not necessarily what's building around town. But we have to strike that balance to make sure that people can afford to live here, raise their families here and still be able to pay our bills. And that's what it comes down to. Everybody's got to pay their bills. And this town relies heavily on tourism and what drives everything around here. Ponies, tourism, seafood, it all goes hand in hand. So we got to strike the balance on it all.
To start, I support the early stages of movement that the council, Councilman Bob first brought about, which is to offer incentives, incentives in the form of tax incentives to year-round residents. Unfortunately, to do that in other states, municipalities, cities, they can make that change and the state of Virginia has to go through straight out of state legislation. That's a lot. It's a hard step. We would be really taking it upon ourselves on our own to do it, but that's at a state level. I believe at a state level, we've had Governor Youngkin here, we've had other more closer and have closer contact with state representatives, that that's a step that we can take to show it or have full-time residents receive incentives and real estate tax. And that's a start. Then we need to branch out and find other coastal areas and do research and ask, what are you doing? Because they're going through the same things that we are. So yes, I think that that's the beginning stages, incentives with tax cuts as far as tax incentives go for full-time residents. And we ask for your support or the council, I ask for the council's support as they move forward in that, contact your representatives so that we can take that big step.
That's a tough thing to incentivize. Real estate prices are really high. Mortgage rates are really high. We know what happens when you buy a high-dollar home. These rates right now, the payments are crazy high. What's the best option for somebody that's either investing in a retirement home or even a dual resident, maybe that, you know, lives on the island half a year and elsewhere another half a year? It's hard to incentivize that because the payments are so high, it's easier to make money doing the short-term rentals. It'll pay for itself. We know that's, you know, probably happens a lot. To incentivize that with a tax rate, that's kind of tough because a lot of mortgage, real estate taxes are deductible. So, you know, some need the tax deduction when they buy other homes. It's just, it's a really hard, hard problem to find some solutions for. The company that I work for, we're expanding. We have a lot of young people, engineers, professionals that were bringing to the eastern shore and a lot of them are going out of state, you know, private schools and better school systems. I hate to even say that out loud because I love our school. I love our schools. We have a great school system. Our teachers work really hard. But from the outside looking in, they don't look at that the same. They're looking at scores and, you know, who knows what college coming from Shinkatik High School, even though we've got, you know, more out there in the spotlight, it's hard to sell that to young couples with families. That's a really hard thing to incentivize, but we need to be creative and sell our small quaint and the benefits of growing up in a small town here on the eastern shore. It's a tough one.
So as we've gone through this process over the last several months, we've learned a lot as far as the things that you can and can't do. Like Nick said, it's not as easy for us and the Commonwealth to do some of the things that some of our local neighbors, a state way have done just because of the difference in the way legislation works. What we have learned is this, as we go towards approaching our state legislatures is that it's safety in numbers. So as we can buy more communities that have similar situations that we do, that maybe have the similar situations that we are with the influx of things like short-term rentals, the decline of year-round housing, is to get those localities to sign on with us and go to the legislation where it's harder for Shinkatik by itself to affect a change like that. If we get other communities, you know, perhaps it's something like Cape Charles, it could be Colonial Beach on the western shore, there's some areas that have similar problems that have similar makeups that we do as far as needing that tourism because as Denise and a lot of folks up here have said, it's very important that we're able to maintain the tourism, the TO tax and the real estate taxes because that pays for so much of the budget that we have. You know, we want the building to enjoy the world-class EMS service that we have here. We want the building to enjoy the world-class police department and police officers that we have here. And it takes money to do that and it's not coming from real estate taxes right now. And no one wants to see high real estate taxes. So that balance is very important, but at the same time, it's about growing those relationships, not only with our state legislation, but also with communities that either they're both near and far, but share similar circumstances to what we have.
I was just writing down about a couple houses I left to you for my kids. It's past and tough. If you're building your own house, it's $160 a square foot that you build. And if you're getting a contractor, it's going to be at least around $140. So a thousand square foot house, building it yourselves, $160,000. Lot on street is going to be $125. It's going to be, mainly it's going to be $35. That's the only savings you want to get from moving off the island. There's just, there's just things are facts. On Shinkatik, I have the ground study system. It's again, $6,000, it's $36,000. Water meter's $5,000. I mean, just those numbers. And that's, like I said, if you go a thousand square foot house, it's very modest. Don't get me wrong, it's very nice, but it's modest. I mean, you've got a lot of money and then you're talking 6% to 7% interest, it is not affordable. And as a town, unless you're subsidized, and these are just facts, and these are nothing here except for the water meter, that you may have to somewhere in the margin and say it's $5,000. That's the only thing we got on this whole list I've just done. That's the only thing that we can change. We can change it for $5,000, change it to $700. That's the only thing on this list we can't. Lumber is a commodity. We can't change that. The lots, you can't tell some lot, you're in a lot, but you got to be like, you got stuff with $35, not $125. We can't, we can't do that. And like I said, the only thing to change, so this is past and hard. And these numbers are real and they're extremely hard for our young people. And like I said, unless you can help them, it's just past and hard. But like I said, all this thing, only thing we can do is bring our, bring our board, beat our down, that's not a big help. Unless you're subsidized, these are just hardcore facts. And there's nothing that us as councils, like I said, that this get realistic. We can't tell people that, that you got to sell your lot for $25,000 or $35,000 if it's for $125,000. We can't do that. It's just dumb, that's not the business of the.
All right, ladies and gentlemen, based on our time constraints, this will be the last question for the evening. And this is to all candidates. Describe your management style and personality traits. This should be good.
Depends on which day of the week you hit it. Now, you know, I'm one of those people, I feel like that we need to be more proactive to certain situations instead of reactive. And I feel like for a little while now that the town has been mainly reactive. Our town manager, I worry the crap out of him every other day about stuff. It's either calling him, texting him, emailing him, asking different questions. Where do we stand on this? How do we stand on that? I'm intense and I'm a fighter. I've also been called a squeaky wheel. But, you know, I've learned that nothing good or bad for that matter happens by just sitting on your rear end and waiting for it. You got to get out there and pursue the hard problems. You got to get out there and get the challenges and rise up to them. You know, there's a couple of things going on. That beach, I'm going to tell you all, as sure as I'm standing here, I will die on that hill until that last concrete block is put up that I can't get over there the way we've always done it. I will die on that hill. That is a major concern for me. As I said, that's my management style. I will, I will go out and fight. I'm not one to just sit back and just wait for it to happen. I'm going to fight for you all. I'm going to fight for this town. I don't care if I got to go to Richmond, I don't care if I got to go to DC, I don't care if I got to go down the county. I'm going to fight for what I feel like is right for the citizens and this town and for our visitors. We have the greatest asset in our employees, in our beach, in our fire company, in our EMS, in our police. We need to protect all of that. We need to protect all of you. We need to protect every citizen that's coming here and fight for what Shinkatik needs and what Shinkatik deserves. That's my management style.
Okay, so in becoming mayor, the first thing you learn is how to work with other agencies. And it has been my practice to listen first and think about... And it has been my practice to listen first and think about how my decision and my actions are going to be long-term. I understand Denise's want to jump right in. And I know there are certain things, and I'm sure Mary after can tell you more, when she would like to get more reaction from me, but I'm not a reactionary. I sit back, I analyze it, I work with the council. That's that's one of the biggest things you have to do as mayor, is work with your council and understand them because they are the ones with the power. The mayor is there to run the meetings, interact with everybody, but the council is the one that has the power. And sometimes you just have to sit back and then kind of go with the flow. If the council wants it done that way, that's the way it's going to be. So I've I've learned to to hold my tongue at times. So my my management style is is not reactionary, it's to be thoughtful.
Kind of covered a little bit in my opening statement, but I'm not the right person. That is probably one of my number one. It would've been good that our meetings are in the evening because I'm fun in the in the evening after work. I believe in transparency, being open and honest, being approachable. It's been very, very important in my career. Being a good listener, I don't want to touch on that, Arthur. And also a sense of humor, just making sure that retention isn't something that can be cut with a knife. You get more good conversations, more healthy conversations if the air is light. And even if you're really angry, you know, the bite of your tongue thing, I mentioned that too, or the interesting sense of humor and having that open door policy where you're approachable. You want people to come and tell you, you know, concerns or their input. Anytime somebody comes, here's one of my biggest things. I don't, there's no such thing as a complaint. It's feedback. And that just says, it's a positive attitude. Everybody has feedback, it's not complaining. And that's been really important, that's that's kind of come in handy in in the safety world where you want to make sure that people bring concerns for you, to you, and stay proactive. So that's pretty important. I guess that's being a bit of a nutshell. Good smile.
So for me, when I entered my professional life, whatever, thirty years ago, whatever it was, I was, I was in accounting. And that's how I spent, even when I went and worked at Cisco the first five years I was there. So I'm very analytical about my approach a lot of times. Numbers make a lot of sense to me. But what I learned as I was going through my career is I actually liked the people interaction better than I did spreadsheet interaction. So I was very fortunate, the company I worked for, they're very much on development of their people. So they teach us a lot around strategic thinking. So I am apt not to react quickly. I'm a big reader, I like numbers, I like facts, I like having all those in front of me before I make a decision. Not that, not that I'm I'm frozen by that or I have to have that, but that's what I prefer. I'm also a big collaborator. I lead a large group of people, responsible about four hundred people, and that, you can't do that by yourself. It takes, it takes a village to build an operator or something like that. So collaboration is big with me. You know, I'll give you an example. We had a, we had a meeting the other night and it came up about political sign ordinance. And in my head, I I thought I knew how this was going to go. We had some public input and you know what? It changed my mind as far as where we were at with that and that we weren't ready to push that through for a vote or to make a change to the ordinance. So it's very important, in my experience too, to be very inclu-, you know, to be inclusive, you know, to make sure that you're hearing from everybody. We've talked a lot of this tonight about, you know, partnering with our, you know, whether it's legislature or our federal officials, but it's also making sure that we partner with you, the community, and we get your input before we make major decisions. So that's my style.
I've grown up in business, ever since I was thirteen, I've grown up around coastal properties, I've grown since the same age. However, I also know that everybody don't think like I do, think that it's. So I have to listen and I have to respect what people are telling me. And I'm going to tell you one thing, some people think that compromise is a horrible word. You can make compromise work better all the way around. People just listen and and respect each other. I find out that everything I thought was right isn't. And if I implement what they're telling me, it works better. So I have, I can't say by no means that I'm perfect. I have to take time to listen to other people and put their inputs in. Because I'm going to tell you, we live in a island that were blessed. People put good inputs into it. I mean, our organizations are doing things that we have a town that has to spend money on. I mean, I can say, people that work with the U.S., they're looking at people right now, they're cautious to send. And we couldn't, and listen, can you park it better than them? There's people that work with the L. We couldn't pay for to have that done, what they're putting into our stuff. So if we work together, and I think that town is this, I think a lot of people have worked together. And it's, it's just, to me, it's, I can say, I know me and my, my shame in the town of Chingate, are we perfect, like I said, now? But I am like a lot to you. I see a lot of good too.
As far as my personality, everybody in here that knows me has probably told me a time or two to loosen up, that I'm too serious. Now, I I like to cut up, carry on, I like to make light of things, I take pressure off. As far as leadership, not only being with a phone company for all these years and working with others in different areas, different states, especially after storms and disasters, but for the last twenty-three years I've coached up to the high school, I was the head football coach here for eighteen years. One of the hardest things to do is to be the smallest public school in the state of Virginia and win football games. But over that eighteen years, we won a lot of football games, okay? Same with baseball, same with all of our other sports. And the way we were able to do that wasn't big. It was surrounding yourself with good people. We have a citizen here, Mr. Joe Lee, who came from Ohio, coached at mine union, moved to the island, wanted to help. Look, we'll take help wherever we can get it. He came, he offered a college-level coaching, really helped turn things around. And what I was able to do there was learn, as I was told. The talent that guy, what he can do, the young guy can learn from the old guy. You've got to have both. And so that is, that's my leadership. My leadership's to be open-minded, to listen and surround myself with good people, to get that positive information and to look ahead. I don't want to look at right now, I want to look at where are we going to be five, ten years from now. Set a plan and let's move forward there.
All right, you're all, at this time, we're going to hear your closing statements, which will be limited to two minutes. And we will start this evening with Council. How do you?
Well, once again, I want to thank you all for coming out here and participating. Like I said earlier, government doesn't work unless we have the people's input. All the questions tonight have been wonderful and I hope that we've answered them to your satisfaction. If not, I'll tell you what I told you all eight years ago. I made one promise eight years ago, one. And that was, you could call me, email me, text me, and I'm going to listen to you. And if you've got a question, I'll get an answer for you. But guess what? Might not be the answer you want to hear, but you'll get an answer. And I feel like I have stuck by that. I listen to people all the time. I ask for people's input. Couple of conversations over the eight years, well, more than a couple of conversations I've asked people. Give me your ideas, give me your suggestions, tell me what you're thinking about this. And I try to take all of that and go with it. When people participate at the public comment session, just like Billy said a while ago, you know, there's information that comes up, us, that we might not not have necessarily thought about before. And it makes a big difference. Your participation makes a big difference. I will continue to keep that promise that I will listen to you all and I'll give you an answer. And I'm going to promise you, it might not be the answer you want to be, but I will tell you this. If I feel like that this island has been wronged, if we're not getting our fair share, if we're not being listened to by the state, by the federal level, I'm going to continue to fight. And I'm going to fight for our rights and I'm going to fight for what I feel is best for this island. And I ask for your support on the number five. And again, I appreciate you all being out here tonight.
All right, so I just need to echo what Denise says. I appreciate everybody coming out tonight, which shows that we have a really strong community. And there are a lot of projects coming up. You know, the downtown Maddox Corridor, something is coming through, water filtration plant over on NASA, making sure our water's, you know, still drinkable, not contaminated with PFAS and all that stuff. Just to give you, I I feel blessed, for one, being born on Chingate, raised up on the pony farm with my brother and the two sisters, having to drag on their coattails, having to work at the variety of jobs that I was able to work with, which they, they, they were work, but they also allowed me the opportunity, which most people don't get. I was, I was able to go down and and work at Mike McGee's dock. I was not, how to put that? That opportunity was thrust upon me. I was not, that was not my choice. It was, it was one of those things. If you came home from school, you weren't going to sit there. My dad made sure you had a job and I got to work at Mike McGee's, which was a lot of fun. Also had the opportunity to work out in the ocean, which is something that a lot of people don't get to do. And that, you know, if you weren't born on Chingate, you wouldn't have that opportunity to get on a boat and go out in the ocean. I had the opportunity in nineteen eighty-seven, we were working, I was working on the ocean and I passed my sister on her tour boat. And I had the opportunity then to change into a commercial captain and do tours so I I can talk to the tourists all day. So I'm going to tell, make room for time and I'm going to tell this story and I've told it before. If you've listened to the town council meetings, I try to end every town council with roll tide. And the reason I do that is because it's tied to my mom, who was born and raised in Tuscaloosa. And it ties me back to my family. So it's not necessarily that I'm tied to the university. I'm tied with the family that I was born into, I'm tied to the family that is Chingate.
Yeah, I was thinking, maybe I could just put a real down for the opening statement for the closing, that's not going to be it. I do, I do have a point though. Nick, just think, if you won a state championship, you're going to be vice president of the council. Nobody called that, I'm sorry.
Ask them.
Well, I can say, I do want to thank everybody for trusting me for the last twelve years. I can say that a lot of little things have come up. I mean, a lot. And that's the work with, work with all of them up here. But I do want to thank each and every person that's up here. Because I guarantee you one thing, they're not doing it for the money. They are doing it for the, for the dollar. Because like I said, they don't forget paying. And somebody one time asked me about, about getting a pay raise. I said, nah, I said, if you triple what we make, it's still, nobody's going to do it for that reason. But I do want to thank you for allowing me to serve you all for the last, past twelve years. And I'm, I'm here again asking you for another four. Thank you very much.
So we've talked about a lot tonight. A lot of it comes around sustainability, whether it's sustainability of the beach, sustainability of the community and keeping or being able to afford more year-round housing opportunities for folks. And then also sustainability of our schools through the increased year-round residents. And like was said tonight, it's a double-edged sword because while we do want that increase in in year-round, we also need the the potential in economic growth as far as our tourism, what our tourism affords to us, you know, whether it's TO tax, meals tax, it's very important to this, to this community and our continued way of life that we we've enjoyed over the, over many years. So it's very important that as we go through the decisions that we make, that we, you know, truly partner, whether if it's with the county of Akimak, the state of Virginia, federal officials, the safe way of our way of life, to ensure that we maintain access to that beach and those nine hundred and sixty-one important parking spaces that sit over there. All these things are very important. Like Nick had mentioned, it's about, it's all about surrounding ourselves with good people and the right people. That starts with this community. So what I'll ask each of you, when things come up, whether it's spots on the BZA, planning commission, put your name in. You know, the the great thing about this community is we have a, we have a very diverse set of residents. A lot of people have a lot of good ideas. So come to the council meetings, offer, offer your suggestions. And in closing, I would just like to say, it's been a privilege to serve for the last four plus years and I look forward, if I'm elected, to serve you for another four, so. But in closing, I would like to say, you can't go wrong with anybody on this stage, whoever you pick is going to have the best interests of Chingate at heart and we're, we're all going to be winners for that. So thank you.
Now I had this big closing statement all mapped out here and I've just decided to take a different route. My campaign slogan has been, because Chingate is a big deal. And it's evident to the out, to the number that have showed up tonight to to hear us talk about it. It is a big deal to everybody in this room. A big deal to a lot of people that have bits and pieces and business owners and part-time residents, homeowners. But I'm going to just reflect, when I was a teenager, I couldn't get all this on, I can help y'all. It was nothing to do, it was boring. I won't even tell you what year that was. But I lived in Atlanta, Georgia, Fort Worth, Texas, Hampton Roads. I can tell you all the things that I don't want to be a part of anymore. And when I came back home before my father passed away, the sand in your shoes, everybody here's heard that, right? You've got that sand in your shoes and you always come back home and your perspective is completely different. It was so big when I was a kid and now it just seems a little smaller and a little more precious. And the sunrises and the sunsets and the flashing of that darn lighthouse as a kid was the most irritating thing in the world. That old ballad was terrible. But it's a beautiful sight now. We, we, we are a big deal. We're a big deal to, to many that dream to come here and learn about misty and mystery class. To those that came as a kid that haven't quite gotten back yet, that follow us on Facebook and all these great sites and the foodies that visit, the magazines that, and our ice cream. I mean, the homework. We, we're such a big deal. And I'm, I'm going to, the participation of these council meetings is so important, like many have said. We don't always think about everything, so everybody else's input is very, very important. I'm not going to say come to the meeting, I don't think that's the complete answer. I'm going to say get your word there, write an email, send a letter with a friend. We have a lot of regulars to these meetings, so send it with them if you don't like to stand up in front of people. We have a lot of regulars to these meetings, so send it with them if you don't like to stand up in front of people and speak. Get your message to the council. It's, because we're a big deal. Thank you.
I'd like to thank everybody for coming. One thing I've learned over this month and a half or so as we've done this, communication is a big thing. Communication between the town and its citizens. And I, I personally don't think, whether or not I'm on council, that we should wait until election time to all get together and have questions and answers. Think it'd be a good idea, maybe once a year, just have a town hall meeting where people can come, they can mingle and we can have your ideas. I'm running for town council because I enjoy serving the island in whatever form I can. I like to give back. I watched my father serve two terms on the council. I've watched many of you go through. I watched my neighbor Mary cross the street for all the years. Relatives, town employees, it just means a lot to me. And I, I want to help preserve what we have here while we also grow and we do well economically. So thank you all again for coming.
Thank you all. Ladies and gentlemen, we have come to the conclusion of our forum for the evening. Regrettably, we weren't able to get up to all of your questions because of the time constraints, but I'm sure that each of the candidates would be happy to field your questions either after tonight's meeting or later on during the week. I do want to point out a very, very, one very, very important fact. How often do you see candidates who are amenable and agreeable to one another? We now, we, we now are experiencing so many contentious elections, things of this nature. We lose sight that we are right people. We are one people. And that it's good to have you all this evening to share with your constituents, your residents, your neighbors, your friends, your uncles, your aunts and everything, your insights on being members of the Chingatik Town Council. I regrettably will not be here to administer oath to each of you for the first time in forty years. It has been a pleasure. I'm very happy to be here this evening and I wish for all of you the best, all of you the best. I've got to give props to my colleagues. They got me through this tonight. I've never done this before in my life. I wasn't a talented, but anyway. So it's really been a pleasure for me to be here with you this evening. I want to remind and encourage everyone to vote. Everyone, encourage your family, your friends, people that you don't even like. Encourage them to vote because your voice is very, very important. With that, I stink to you all with a wonderful evening. Hope you will have a wonderful week and congratulations to each of you. Thank you and good night.